It's just that she was unable to locate a vehicle at that time. She's found one, and she was trying to get a used one, but it's just hard to secure one like that. So this one will be in by the end of the month, and so she needed some extra funding to go with that purchase. The rest of it is office supplies, operating expense. There's a new inspector that she has, and she has to get all the supplies and equipment for that individual to make sure they are able to do their job. And so that total is fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. And like I said, that is coming from within her own budget.
Mr. Chairman, I move we send this resolution to the full council to do pass.
Are you talking about the total appropriation in the current budget for this?
For her current budget. That's probably her entire budget for everything. But only thing right now that we're looking at is within her salary, she has an extra fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. She's had an unfilled slot, and so she's using some of that funding to help cover the cost of that vehicle and for equipment and office supplies to help that employee get everything they need to do their job.
So this money here gonna stay solid?
That four ninety-six, one seventy-seven, seventy-three, if I'm not mistaken, that is her entire budget for the year.
For the year.
Yeah.
It's four hundred and ninety-six?
Four ninety-six, one seventy-seven, seventy-three. Yes, sir.
All right.
Can we get a second on that?
Second.
All right. We have a motion of a second to send this to the full council with a due pass. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it.
So that's number?
We haven't added it yet, but it was in front of us, and it was a budgetary issue, so I just wanted to go ahead and bring that up. The other thing that we have, we have a presentation from Ms. Griffin with Urban Renewal. She wants to come up and address the committee about the urban renewal cash on hand for projects. And so we'll allow her a chance to speak.
Good afternoon to everyone present. Thank you for the opportunity to present at this meeting to give the updates for the Pine Bluff Urban Renewal Agency. I first would like to give some information. The Pine Bluff Urban Renewal Agency meets the third Tuesday of each month at 5:30 PM at 417 West Sixth Street here in Pine Bluff, and this is an open meeting. Our meetings are published in the Pine Bluff Commercial, and we also give a meeting notice to the local media to attend. The board minutes for the Pine Bluff Urban Renewal Agency are posted on the city's website. You can go to Pine Bluff City's website, click on Departments, and find the Pine Bluff Urban Renewal Agency. Click on it, and you are able to view our minutes. All recommendations and all decisions are made at our meetings. I want to say that as the executive director, I am committed to seeing all projects completed. The Urban Renewal Agency board members, they are also committed to seeing all projects completed. This administration has expressed on several occasions that they are also committed to seeing all projects completed. The Urban Renewal Agency and Go Forward, we participated in transition meetings from the old administration to the new administrations. And during those meetings, I kind of feel like we kind of got hung up. We got hung up on budgets, projections, performers, and this is my opinion. I was kind of looking forward to talking about the projects, the great projects that we have for the city of Pine Bluff and our residents. And the urban renewal has always had a budget. We've always had budgets, we've always had projections, we've always had performers, and when we were asked, we delivered and supplied those to whomever asked. The 2017 sales tax was the primary source for funding for the projects. And when the city council decided to divert funds from the 2017 sales tax to other projects, we made adjustments accordingly. During an impromptu meeting that I had with this administration, I was asked to come before the city council to actually disclose all funds, private and also grants and city funds. So what you have before you, I had Mr. Proctor to take the, you should have a copy in front of you, is a spreadsheet that is compiled of the many spreadsheets just to give a summarization of the projects and their funding. So for lines one and two, we have roughly 1.2 million available, and this comes from the February 28, 2025 reconcile reports that come for urban renewal. So roughly, we have 1.2 million available in cash. Lines four through six is the 2017 sales tax. There was an allocation from the city council made on December 16 of 2024 for eight hundred and sixty thousand. That brings the cash available for projects roughly a little over two million dollars. For lines nine through twenty-one, we have...
Where are you at? Can we go line on line?
Right here.
Yes, sir. We're on page one.
See, right here. This is the number. So basically, she started off last year with 1.2. We added another eight sixty, so total at this moment is two point oh.
Two point oh nine four. Okay. Line on line, precept on precept, again.
Say that again for me.
Can you go line on line?
Yes. Lines one and two, that's showing the cash on hand for projects, a little over 1.2 million. Then lines four through six, that's showing the 2017 sales tax. There was an allocation by the city council on December 16 of 2024 for eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So when you add those two items together, those two line items together, you get roughly over two million dollars. Lines nine through twenty-one, that's the go-kart track. Those are the actual amounts we are under contract for, for completion of the projects. Line 20 shows the expenses to date for May 1 of 2025. This number comes from an in-house reporting that I keep in my office as far as what we've spent thus far through that date, because what I have from the finance department goes through February 28. So that wouldn't have been an accurate number. So we roughly spent a hundred and sixty-four thousand at the go-kart track. So what shows a balance of 2.7 million, a little over 2.7 million. When you subtract the 2 million cash on hand from that 2.7, you're showing 628,000 in the red. Okay? So from lines 25 through 28, this is the funding from Go Forward, from the grants, private funds that are for projects. Urban, I'm sorry. Go Forward has done a fantastic job and has collected through grants and private funds That's the total amount that has been collected for projects. The expenses thus far from those monies is roughly 3.2 million, and that was to finish out Six and Main Street, the construction at Six and Main Street and some FFNE furniture, fixtures, and equipment, which left a balance of one point, a little over 1.2 million. When you subtract out the 628,000 from that 1.2 million, you'll turn over to page two. At the top, you'll see the balance remaining for furnitures, fixtures, and equipment for operating for Six and Main Street and the go-kart track, which is 613,000. From lines 34...
You know, I see y'all got a lot of money y'all be moving. And I don't see a finished product yet.
Let's see her finish. Because she came here to explain to us.
Well, they not doing anything. Go forward.
If you would just allow me to finish, and then I can take questions afterwards, you may get some of your questions answered during my presentation. For lines 34 through 49, this is Six and Main Street operating. If we take a look at column D where it says 2026, one year of operation, this is the projected operating for one full year for Six and Main. And you roughly see 269,000. Now, originally, we were estimating about 150,000, but the utilities at that site is going to run more than what was anticipated. So we have some more real numbers since there are utilities at that site that are on and running now. So for Six and Main Street, we're looking at being open by the summer, so that's a half year of operation. So column C is the 2025 half-year operation, which we just halved everything from the one-year operation, and we're looking at roughly 134,000 for operation expense for Six and Main Street. From lines 51 through 58, that is the remaining furniture, fixtures, and equipment that need to be purchased for that site, and that's estimated at 152,000. So you're going to add that 134,000 and 152,000, add that together, and subtract that amount from the 613. And we'll go over to page three, which shows the balance at the end of the year, December 31 of 2025, of 326,963.64. But remember, we have Six and Main is up and running. So the budget that was projected for a full year's operation was the 169,000. That's going to be subtracted from that amount, because come January 1, that budget is already set. So we roughly have remaining for FFNE for the go-kart track of 57,643.64. Now, page four, this is a document that was presented during one of the transition meetings. We didn't get a chance to elaborate on it much during the meetings, but this was presented by Dr. Watley. It's on Go Forward letterhead, and it was dated October 2 to Mayor Washington. This speaks to the operating funds that needed to be requested for 2025, 2026, and 2027. So you see those amounts there within that chart that's in the middle of this documentation, and this was prior to us knowing about the additional, well, I don't want to call it additional, the tax collection for 2017 that was behind. We didn't know it was two months behind at that time, and that's why that eight sixty allocation came from. So there was no funds requested for 2025. For 2026, we're looking forward to the budget season in September, because there will need to be an allocation for operating for the go-kart track for 2026. We're looking to have the go-kart track completed by November, so operation for 2026 is on tap. And that's what I have.
But currently, we only have 54,000. I guess after all the expenses, 57,643.64, that's what we have currently for operation of the go-kart track.
Yes, after this year, yes, sir.
So we need another 100,000, roughly 90,000?
Yes.
And then moving forward, Six and Main would require 200...
269.
269.
That's what we're projecting now. By the end of the year, we'll have some more realistic numbers, because the operation for Six and Main, we will have some hard numbers for that site.
Okay. Does that include any type of rents collected or anything?
No.
Okay.
This is...
Just real costs, just the cost, no income?
Yes.
And then with the go-kart track, we're looking definitely to generate income from it, so hopefully it will be able to sustain itself?
Yes.
And its future needs. Okay.
I have a question. So you all mean this go-kart track has been talked about for the last, what, five years?
Yes, sir. Just as with any construction project, it takes some time. We've been dealing with street skate for over a year. It just, it takes time.
But you know, I don't have nothing to go forward nowhere.
I understand. I understand.
Y'all take too much time for our citizens, and we don't, I don't see nothing.
Well, I think that superficially, we're supposed to do it in a snap of a finger, when realistically, anybody that deals with construction knows that it takes time to actually do the project, and especially dealing with municipality, and you just can't call up someone to come out and do something. Steps have to be taken in order to go under contract, and things do happen. There was some situations at the go-kart track site dealing with utilities, but since then, as of Wednesday, the concrete slab has been poured, so they're ready to move forward. But now we're dealing with weather, so we just have to deal with it a day at a time, but everything is under contract, and it will be built.
Any other questions from any other council members? Oh, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, is there any way we can get a breakdown of this 3,298,000 to see exactly to what did it go toward?
Yes, I can tell you primarily it went to nap hoes. There, yes.
Can we please get a breakdown?
Yeah.
Of it? I mean, I...
I can give you the exact...
It's too big of a number for you to sit here in front of me and try to say?
Oh, no, and I wouldn't try to give, but I can tell you the bulk of it went to nap hoes.
Could we get to what project?
Which is the general contractor for that site at Six and Main.
Yeah, so that 3 million went to Six and Main?
The biggest portion of it, yes.
Okay, okay. Could we get a breakdown? I mean, one of the problems we have, at least this council member has, is just getting a budget for these projects.
Every time we were asked for a budget, it has been supplied.
I'd like to get a breakdown of this 3,298 to see to what it supported for the, I mean, specifically, I mean, did it go, I mean, it's just too big of a number just to say all of it went to construction, just to say what?
Majority of it went to construction.
Okay, okay.
There were two invoices over 500,000, and I know there was one invoice for 474,000. Then there were some smaller amounts, but I can definitely get those to you, because that's the same thing that I'm being asked by the legislative audit, and when my email system is up, I will get that over to them and get that sent over to you also.
And just another question. The bulk of the 2 million that's listed over here between lines 10 and 20, that is the go-kart track?
Yes, construction for the go-kart track. The mini golf, the actual go-karts, the actual construction of the building, the railing system, yes.
Like the 1,808, is that a building?
Yes, that's the building.
Okay, okay. I just... I have one more question, too. Have y'all finished anything yet with the Go Forward?
We're wrapping up Six and Main, yes, sir. The construction is finished at Six and Main.
What does wrapping up mean?
Finish out, finishing out the punch list, getting the FFNE for the site, and then we're waiting on internet. Internet was scheduled to go in on the 15th. I got a call on the 12th last week saying that all of the equipment was not in, so I'm waiting to hear back from them, because once we have internet, we'll start training with the vendors. We have to have internet in order to run some of the kitchen equipment, the POS system, the computers, everything, so we need that at the site to do the training.
I'm hearing more, I'm going to be finished, I'm hearing more and more citizens saying, what are they doing? Now, you know, I have no confidence in Go Forward.
Well, once it opened, they'll see what we've been doing.
All right.
And I'm confident that everyone will enjoy it, that comes out to actually participate in the site.
Mayor.
So I do want to reiterate, because we've had several meetings, and I was very open about how I wanted to proceed for the additional funds that came to fruition once the collections passed September became evident and then were moved to urban renewal. And with that, I also was very clear that I felt strongly that in order for what that looked like entailed regular meetings and a breakdown like this. And I want to say how much I appreciate you coming today. And I think that with the remaining questions or requests for information, like Council Member Lockett's, you know, request for expense breakdown for Six and Main, and I would say Six and Main and what we spent thus far for the go-kart track. And then I would ask, and I think this would be helpful, for, I think, everyone to understand what we are going to be looking toward in terms of making sure that both of these facilities have what they need to actually run, to be up and running. I think giving us some projections in terms of revenue for both, I think, would be really, really helpful for us to anticipate what the process and the conversation will look like in September. And the bottom line is, I think this is an ongoing conversation and interaction, sharing of information, and I think if we continue to do this, that we will be successful with the projects that, you know, have been heavily invested in, that I have made a commitment to seeing through in whatever way that I can, and in a way that is responsible and transparent. And I think if we continue along these lines, that we will all be on the same page and working together. So I just want to reiterate how thankful I am for you coming and providing this information and being communicative as we move forward to see these projects be up and going and provide, you know, entertainment and resources for the community. So...
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I will make sure...
Any other council members? Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
I'll make sure that we get those items sent over to the council, all council members.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Any other business for Ways and Means?
No, so, Mr. Chair.
All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Ways and Means, we are adjourned.
Recording stopped.
Orders and resolutions, we have 10 agenda items. Number one and two are both ordinance. They will be up for the first reading.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If possible, there's a request from the police department if we could try to finish up one and two tonight.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
We'll complete one and two. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 are all resolution. They'll be completed on tonight. All of you should have a replacement for number nine in your packet. And before you, there are resolutions that are to be added to the agenda by vote. Number, the first one is a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget as regards to the general fund. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
Oh, wait. We have to wait.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm moving ahead.
Okay. We'll have to...
So we have, the first one will be, I'm moving ahead, I'm sorry. The first one will be a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget as regards to the general fund. This will be number 11. Everyone with me?
I got you.
A resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget as regards to the general fund, that will be number 11. The next one will be a resolution appointing Keira J. Burrell to the city of Pine Bluff, Pine Bluff, Arkansas Convention Center Hotel Public Facilities Board. That will be number 12. And the next one will be a resolution appointing Rocky R. Thornburg to the Aviation Commission. That will be number 13. And the next one will be a resolution appointing Ken Johnson to the Aviation Commission. That will be 14. And the last one will be a resolution appointing Debbie H. Hollenworth to the Civic Auditorium Complex Commission. That will be number 15. Is everybody on one accord? Any?
Hold on, hold on.
You want me to go through it again?
Could you go through that one more time?
Okay. Number 11 is a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget as regards to the general fund. Number 12, a resolution appointing Keira J. Burrell to the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas Convention Center Hotel Public Facilities Board. Number 13, a resolution appointing Rocky R. Thornburg to the Aviation Commission. Number 14, a resolution appointing Ken Johnson to the Aviation Commission. Number 15, a resolution appointing Debbie H. Hollenworth to the Civic Auditorium Complex Commission. And everyone should have a replacement item for number nine in the packet as well. And if there's no further discussion, that concludes the ordinance and resolution.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
So moving.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
So before a call to meet the tonight's council meeting to order, and good evening, everybody, we will not entertain any public comments for agenda items, because there is no one signed up, and so we will move forward in calling the meeting to order. Yeah, just for, we just have one person signed up for non-agenda item at the end of the meeting, okay? So calling the meeting to order, and we will begin this evening with our invocation, and I would like to ask Reverend Gerrotha, Ger- German? Did I say that right?
German.
Huh?
German.
Oh, German, German? German, okay. Reverend German, please join us at the podium so you can deliver invocation for us this evening. And who is a Reverend with Cherry Street Memorial AME Zion Church. Thank you so much.
Sister Roberts? It's German.
Okay. Reverend German, I did used to be a spelling bee queen, so I thought I had it right.
Very good. Thank you. Let me tell you that 2 Corinthians says, "We fix our eyes not on what is seen, but on what is unseen, since what is seen is temporary, but what is unseen is eternal." Heavenly Father, we come this evening thanking you for this opportunity. We thank you, Lord, because you've been so good to us, that you've given us a mind to do the work that you have set before us. Father, we ask now that you come and be a part of this meeting. We want you to lead us, to guide us, and direct us in the way that we should go that is approved by you and you alone. Father, we ask that you touch the hearts of the council, give them the strength that they need to do the job that you have set before them. Give them the wisdom that they need so that they can continue to do what you've called them to do. Father, we ask that we all be on one accord, and we want you to be the accord that we're on. Father, we know that if we put you first, all things will come together in the way that you would have them to come. Father, we ask that you bless this council, bless them, not just them, but their families and those that they are surrounded by. Bless them so that they can be the anchors that is needed so that the job for the city of Pine Bluff can be well done. And in the end, you will say, "Well done, my wonderful servants." Father, these and all blessings, we ask in your son, Jesus' name, and we all say, "Amen."
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. And next, we will ask Bella Henderson to come to the podium so that she can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Henderson is a student at Coleman Intermediate School.
Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Bella. Thank you, Ms. Bella. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mays?
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye. Here. Excuse me.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Lockett?
Here.
Councilmember Frazier? Councilmember Brunson?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Councilmember Fells?
Here.
Seven persons.
Oh. Oh, sure. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 5th, 2025.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of May 5th, 2025 council meeting. Any discussion? No discussion? All those wishing to approve indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now, we will hear from our committees. Ways and Means, Councilmember Holcomb, will you please read us your report?
Oh, I'll be Brown Jr.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Councilmember Brown Jr.
Thank you, Mayor. Ways and Means met just before this council meeting. We discussed a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget. This is from Inspection and Zoning. It involves roughly $14,180 coming from within their department. This was sent to the full council with a due pass. It's not added to the agenda yet, but if it is, it will be agenda item number 11. During Ways and Means, we also heard from Ms. Shandra Griffin from Urban Renewal. She gave us an update on all the projects that we have going on within Urban Renewal, or GoCarTrack, Six of Main project, and the funds that are needed to complete those projects, and funds needed for future investments into those projects. And so we have received an update for her, from her. We had some questions from council members, and I believe Ms. Griffin is going to supply that information by email to those members that had those concerns. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
And now, Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver the report for the Ordinances and Resolutions Committee?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. Ordinance Resolution, the agenda items number one and two are both ordinance, and they will be completed on tonight. Agenda items number three through 10 are all resolutions, and they will be completed on tonight. All of you should have resolutions 11 through 15, which will have to be added to the agenda. The first resolution, number 11, a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget as regards to the general fund. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolutions 11 through 15 be added to the agenda. No batch? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 11 be added to the agenda. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier? Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fells?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, and I forgot to do this during ordinances and resolutions, but I would like to pull number 10 from the agenda for this evening.
Pull number 10?
Yes, sir. I failed to do that during the committee meeting. I apologize.
To let it lighten the load just a little bit for us tonight. Number 10 has been pulled.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Yes, sir.
Agenda item number 12, a resolution appointing Keidra J. Burrell to the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas Convention Center Hotel Public Facilities Board. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 12 be added to the agenda. Any discussion? With no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier? Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fells?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Agenda item number 13, a resolution appointing Rocky R. Thornburg to the Aviation Commission. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 13 be added to the agenda. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, okay, this is Mr. Thornburg's second term?
This is a, yes, this is a reappointment.
Okay. He's only served one previous term?
That's my understanding.
Is that, okay. Okay.
Okay. So, any further discussion? With no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier? Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fells?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Agenda item number 14, a resolution appointing Ken Johnson to the Aviation Commission. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution 14 be added to the agenda. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Now, this particular appointment, it's more than his second term?
It's a real.
He's served more than two terms?
You know what? I did ask that, I did ask that question previously. I'm not certain about Mr. Johnson, but I was. It was requested, given his experience and his relationship with the airport. So I'm not going to say that I'm certain about that.
Yeah. The question is, there is, and that's what I'm saying. We have in the municipal code that one can serve no more than two consecutive terms, and nobody more than 10 years. And then there are certain, I think there are only two commissions where there are, there are three commissions where you can't be reappointed to, and that's Civic Auditorium, Civil Service, and Crime Commission. I'm just, I'm just trying to see, Madam City Clerk?
I'll tell you what.
I want to see if we can pull maybe the last two until we can make sure, and probably, we might need to rework the municipal code that prohibits one from being reappointed to the Civic and Auditorium Board, if it's the pleasure of the council that we reappoint people to the Civic and Auditorium Board. But as it stands right now, you cannot be reappointed to the Civic and Auditorium Board.
To the Civic and Auditorium Board?
Hmm.
Ken Johnson's on Aviation.
Yes, ma'am, but the next appointment that you'll be considering is the Civic and Auditorium Board from Ms. Hollingsworth.
And that has been, now, I believe that I checked on her, and that's when I learned that there was a municipal code. And the three appointments were requested. Now, let me ask you this. Is it possible for us to suspend the rules in a case where, especially, so the two things that I would say about Mr. Johnson is how invaluable he has been in that area. And we know that just this weekend coming up, we've got the fly-in and that's right, for the black pilots. So I just, I would hate to see him removed just because. And as far as former Mayor Hollingsworth, the conversation that I had with the director, she was clear that we needed to make sure. I think there are some new members, and she wanted to make sure, since there was another member who rolled off that I did not reappoint because of that rule. So I was aware of it and was doing my due diligence to ask. But in that case, if she has served more than one term, she did express to me that she was not interested in serving more than a year or two. She just wanted to help onboard other new members and make sure that in this time where we've got the hotel coming onboard and we're trying to see more, more activity at the Convention Center in terms of conventions and events, that there be a strong board with experience. So I guess my question again would be, in the case of these two appointments, is there a way and room, room in terms of parliamentary procedure to suspend the rules as it relates to these two appointments?
I think we should ask our city attorney. Because I see no problem with these two parties.
Well, I think what we've done in the past, we just have to change the legislation. I mean, if you then begin talking and say that you knew that their rules were, were excellent, which is maybe.
Just continue?
Yes.
Okay.
So we could just pull them, and then if we want to change the legislation, we can do that. But meanwhile, there'll be holdovers.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem with amending the current code. I don't want to get in the business of breaking. We make the laws. We can't start breaking them at our own pleasure. Then, there ain't no laws.
I could make a joke about the federal government, but I won't. Okay. Yes. Then let's pull them, and then we'll go ahead and work to make that change. Would that require an ordinance?
To.
To make that change?
Yes, ma'am.
No, no, no. I'm talking about to change, to make that amendment to the existing code.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
So we're pulling 14 and 15?
Yes.
So that concludes ordinance and resolution. If there's no further discussion.
Well, I'll tell you what. Can I speak, Dr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
We need to watch how we put people back on these boards. Now, Ken had that, Mr. Johnson had that aviation experience. Mr. Hollingsworth was our mayor at one time. Need to see how effective they are with these commissions, too. Some of our commissions are really not doing anything. And they're just, they're just there.
Well, I assure you that I'm not going to appoint anyone who's just there, and I am doing my due diligence. And in the case where I felt I needed to appoint someone new even with a request for reappointment, you know, I did my due diligence. So that, for sure, know that the process is working, and I wouldn't do that. And then, of course, you all always have the authority to not approve something brought before. So I think we have a good process in place, Councilman. Okay. Okay. That concludes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much. Councilmember Frazier is not here this evening, so we will not receive a report for economic and community development until next meeting. Next, we have Councilmember Denton. If you would please present the report for public health and welfare.
Madam Mayor, we did not meet, so there is no report.
Okay. Councilmember Lockett, will you please deliver the report for Public Works?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, the Public Works meeting, Public Works Committee has not met since our last meeting, but we shall meet at our regular time, which is going to be the 27th at 1 o'clock at the old City Council chambers via Zoom and in person. Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And then, next is Councilmember Fells. Will you please deliver the report for the Development and Planning Committee?
So Development and Planning, we met on May the 15th. We did discuss two bid requests. These are properties that are owned by the city, and there are private individuals who requested the ability to acquire those properties. One of these requests was denied, and then the other one, we asked for more time to consider it. We also considered a, an ordinance for one, for a rezoning request. We corrected some, new some liens that have been put on the books. And then we also placed some new liens on the book. Some, most of these items are going to be coming before the council at our next city council meeting. And we'll be announcing our next meeting date soon, once we coordinate with the Clerk's office. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And next, we have the Traffic and Aviation Committee. And Councilmember Brunson, will you please deliver your report?
Thanks, Mayor. Traffic and Aviation has not met since our last council meeting, but I will be scheduling one with the Clerk's office in the next week or so. And that ends my report.
Thank you so much. The next committee meeting, I mean, the next committee report is for Administration. Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver your report?
Thank you, Mayor. The Administration Committee met last Tuesday, May the 13th, with a due pass on agenda item number one, a due pass on agenda item number two, a due pass on agenda item number three, a due pass on agenda item number four, a due pass on agenda item number five, a due pass on agenda, on agenda item number six, and a do not pass on agenda item number seven. Also, we met on a resolution to create a position of community service liaison in the mayor's office for, and for related purposes. Also, a resolution creating position of communication in the mayor's office for related purposes. That was pulled, and that will be discussed in the budget process in October. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Holcomb. And finally, Councilmember Brown Jr., will you please deliver your report on the Public Safety Committee?
No report at this time, Mayor.
Okay. And next, we have our proposed ordinances and resolutions. Councilmember Holcomb.
Agenda item number one, an ordinance amending subsection D of section 21-29 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting compensation-paid part-time police officers up for the first reading.
Whereas to attract qualified candidates to serve as part-time police officers, it is necessary to increase the compensation paid these individuals. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that subsection D in section 21-29 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended to read, "Compensation. Part-time officers shall be compensated at the rate of $21.22 per hour, or such other rate as shall be affixed by the City Council in the municipal budget. Additionally, part-time officers shall be covered by workers' compensation, unemployment insurance, and subject to social security withholding. Section 2, all ordinances are parts thereof, and conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 3, this ordinance not being of a general or permanent nature, it need not be published and shall take effect immediately upon passage and approval."
Suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its second reading?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I do have a point of discussion and a question in the form of a question to the city attorney, as it relates to the possibility of an emergency clause versus, because I know that the intention of the Pine Bluff Police Department was for this to go into immediate effect. So what would we need to do at this point?
It goes into immediate effect.
It does.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Councilmember Lockett?
Madam Mayor, do we, in the, in the particular ordinance, we don't denote where the funds are coming from? Should we state that from?
It's within your budget.
It's, it's within their budget?
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, there's no sheet to say where in their budget. Yeah, but what I'm saying is there's no sheet to say where in their budget.
So are you, well, if it's an amendment, it has to be in writing, correct?
Yes. So what I'm saying is we passed a.
Yes.
An ordinance saying that in ordinances that require money, that we are to denote to where the money to come from.
Yes.
And that all budget adjustments shall be done in the form of resolutions.
That's right.
This is a budget adjustment, but it doesn't have the form to say where the money, I'm not.
So there's a form that we're doing that as a form versus the language?
Yeah, the form and language is interchangeable before me, I'm just saying that there's not in this particular ordinance, the adjustment for where the money actually comes from. Are we going to take it from?
You mean the statement?
Yeah, statement, just a statement saying.
Statement within the resolution, stating where it's coming.
Coming from. See, we're doing a budget adjustment and redesigning the compensation, but we're not saying that the new money is going to come from unused positions, carryover monies, or any other specific. So we would have to add to this some type of justification that we're taking so much money from somewhere to add to this, you know, to make this happen. We have the money.
For sure.
That's not a question.
No, for sure. And I agree and appreciate that we need to stick to that and I think that we've had so many conversations and we know in our minds where this is coming from, but I think that you're on point. I guess my question would be, is there a way for us to pass this with that amendment?
Yes, Mayor, you can just add a section to include that if we know where the money's going to come from, if it's going to come from salaries, then within the police department, we can add that language.
So are you making that amendment? Are you proposing that amendment to the legislation? Thank you.
If I could make that motion that we approve this with the caveat that it would be rewritten and submitted with the justification for where the money is to come from within the police's budget.
Any second to councilmember Lockett's amendment?
I will second, but is it coming from within police salaries?
It's coming with, from within their salaries budget, yes.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that the ordinance number one will be, or item number one, will be amended to reflect the use of existing budget dollars in the salaries budget to fund this ordinance. Any discussion? With no discussion? All those indicate by saying aye to approve this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? Any further discussion on the ordinance itself? Sorry?
Are we in the middle of the second reading?
Okay. I'll entertain the second reading.
We need a reading two times.
Okay.
Are we in the middle of the second reading?
I think so.
Already, yeah.
Oh, there was not, that's right. We do need a motion to suspend the rules and put it on the second reading. We didn't do that.
So you made the motion to suspend the rules? I second the motion to suspend the rules.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Any discussion? With no discussion? All those indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Roll call, Mayor.
Roll call it.
Roll call?
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier? Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fells?
Aye.
An ordinance amending subsection D of section twenty-one, twenty-nine of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting compensation paid part-time police officers.
Move to suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its third and final reading?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and place this item on the third and final reading. Any discussion? With no discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier? Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fells?
Aye.
An ordinance amending subsection D of section twenty-one, twenty-nine of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting compensation paid part-time police officers.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that this ordinance will be adopted as amended. Any discussion? With no further discussion? All those who wish to vote for the adoption of this ordinance as amended indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number two, an ordinance to modify applicant disqualifications for the Pine Bluff Police Department up for the first reading.
Whereas the Pine Bluff Police Department is diligently recruiting individuals to serve as law enforcement officers, to bolster its recruitment efforts, the department would like the option to consider individuals who have either resigned or were terminated from the Pine Bluff Police Department for minor infractions. And whereas the Pine Bluff Code of Ordinances, chapter nineteen, article five, appendix A, forms and requirements, Police Department Disqualifications Number Eleven disqualifies any applicant having been discharged from any commission or recruit position within law enforcement agency for disciplinary reasons, resigning to avoid suspension or discharge, or having resigned during a disciplinary investigation without a final judgment being rendered. And whereas the language contained in the Police Department Disqualification section should be amended to reflect that applicants who were previously terminated for minor infractions may be considered for rehire by the Pine Bluff Police Department. And now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the Pine Bluff Code of Ordinances, chapter nineteenth, article five, appendix A, forms and requirements, Police Department Disqualifications Number Eleven is hereby amended as follows. Having been discharged from any commissioned or recruit position within the law enforcement agency for disciplinary reasons, resigning to avoid suspension or discharge, or having resigned during a disciplinary investigation without a final judgment being rendered. However, at the discretion of the Chief of Police or designee, individuals who resigned or were terminated for the following infractions may be considered for rehire at an entry-level law enforcement position. One policy violation for policy one hundred, policy seven hundred, policy eleven hundred, policy twelve fifteen, or dismissal of criminal misdemeanors and felony. Section two, the Chief of Police or designee shall not consider infractions such as insubordination, fighting, untruthfulness, use of force sustained by IED, which led to termination. Also, applicants who were terminated for pending misdemeanor and felony offenses shall not be considered for rehire until all charges are dismissed. Section three, in the event, any section, in the event, any section, subsection, subdivision, paragraph, sub-paragraph, item, sentence, clause, phrase, or word of this ordinance is declared or judged to be invalid or unconstitutional, such declaration or adjudication shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance, as if the invalid or unconstitutional provision was not originally a part of this said ordinance. Section four, this ordinance being part of a general or permanent nature, the clerk shall constitute be published in accordance with Arkansas law.
Move that we suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its second reading?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the rules be suspended on the second reading of this item. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, councilmember Fells?
So I'm all for us doing everything that we can to boost recruitment in our law enforcement, public safety departments, that's why I voted for the previous ordinance. This one, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, I just didn't think we were going to be pushing it through to the final reading tonight, because I did want to kind of research this a little bit more, see, you know, what kind of brought this about? Is this common within other cities, things like that? And then, for example, one question that I have about the legislation, is it saying, where it says like, example, Roman numeral number one, policy one hundred, Roman numeral number two, policy seven hundred? I'm not quite sure what that means in the context of this ordinance. What are we considering a minor infraction? I just have a lot of questions about this. I'm all for giving people a second chance, but at the same time, I want to make sure we are maintaining a certain standard for our law enforcement, because being a police officer, you know, you do have to meet certain standards, so.
Let me, let me share this. So I had a pretty lengthy couple of conversations with Chief Warrior and what we have found is that where there is an opportunity to engage and recruit people who might have had an instance where they were terminated for something that wasn't serious, and I think some of those serious items are noted in section two, there would still be a process in place, it would not obviously be automatic, but the example that was given to me, even on the front end of recruitment, are people who were turned away because of a tattoo that was presumed to mean something that it may not have meant. The other thing I think that is critical, I have the utmost confidence in our leadership and I don't believe that they would bring anyone on the force who would be harmful to the city or an embarrassment. I think that the reason that when it was brought to me, and I did ask questions, but am extremely supportive, is that when we have our officers and the city really in a dangerous position because we're not recruiting and using all of our means and on any given shift, on any given day, sometimes we can have as few as two. And sometimes, at most, six officers manning and womaning the city at a given time. We have to do everything we can to use our resources and discretion to strengthen the department. And so, you know, I hesitate to say that because everybody doesn't know that, but people should. People should understand that we're not only putting our communities in jeopardy, but the people who are out there serving for us without the kind of support and backup they may need, we have to do what we can. And so that was the reason that I was supportive and I know for a fact that our chief and deputy chiefs would not have brought this. Plus, again, I'll just point to the fact that anything serious has been removed as being something that could be overlooked. So for that reason, I'm very supportive of this and don't think that we need to Terry.
Well, would you be able to answer, like, for example, this information on line five through ten? I'm still like, what are these? I'm still a little confused about what these categories are, I was looking for a little bit of elaboration on that. And then, because, you know, this legislation is saying that, you know, if someone resigned or they were terminated for a minor infraction, they could come back, would it be excessive if we maybe kind of categorize some of those minor infractions that would be allowable? What are your thoughts on that, or is that something?
Well, I think that when, I think by virtue of.
And, oh, one more thing. I only mention that because I see in the attachment that there is an exhaustive list of things that can disqualify an officer. So if we got that detail, I was just wondering if maybe we could also put a few points down on what would be considered an allowable minor offense for an officer to return.
I think that what this is doing when it refers to a policy and identifies reports, and I've known officers to be fired in other jurisdictions, not necessarily this one that I've heard about, for falling asleep. I've heard of officers being fired for wrecking their vehicle. I would look at something like that as minor, especially if an officer was given an opportunity to come back under certain circumstances after having been terminated. And so when I read this, I'm not going to pretend like I went to, you know, the Uniform Code and read every item for reports, but when I read that and think, okay, if this is somebody who made a mistake on their report, was slow completing their reports, didn't they're getting their report in on time, but even on reports, if you go down to section number two, anyone falsifying a report would not be able to be rehired because that would violate the point in section two for untruthfulness. So again, you know, if we're looking at minor infractions as it relates to reports, training goals, standards of conduct, neglect of duty, you know, neglect of duty to me, minor would be falling asleep. Okay? But you couldn't drive your car somewhere to hide and fall asleep and then say you were working, because again, that would violate untruthfulness. So I feel comfortable that by specifically identifying areas of serious infractions that could not be reconsidered, that we are giving our leadership in the department a left latitude, but also they are stipulating very clearly that we're talking about minor infractions as it relates to some very specific areas. And so that's why I've felt comfortable moving forward with this, to afford them an opportunity to hire some folks that may be trying to come back as part-time, because that's something that they, that Chief Warrior did very quickly after a conversation about the situation that we were in in terms of support and new goals and standards for patrol.
Can I just add? I've got a quick, maybe a comment. And this is probably just my HR hat coming on. Of course, I think everyone should, you know, it's a standard, right? And I want it to be a consistent one, right? Because when you think about that, what if somebody comes and say, well, I got fired from not doing my report, but somebody else got rehired because they fell asleep? Like, we need to make sure that when people, when we're thinking about a rehire, that is consistent with everything, because then you'll get into another situation of, well, they're hiring them back, but they didn't hire me back and we both got terminated for something similar, right? Or it wasn't, it was a minor infraction. So I think we need to be mindful of that, but I also think we need to be mindful of what that looks like across the departments. Because again, you have other areas where people have been terminated and they might feel like, well, I want to come back to work for the city and I can't. But it's okay for police officers who have a higher standard than someone who may work in a different department and they can't come back. So I think it's about consistency with me, about making sure that we are fair across the board, so we won't get into a situation where we have to defend why we making decisions that we made.
And to that, I mean, I'm glad you raised that point, because I think that we have to be mindful of exactly what you just said, with or without this change. And I can tell you that there are areas where we haven't always been consistent. And I can also point to, without saying any names, know that there has been a situation where someone was falling asleep and turns out that person had narcolepsy and there was an opportunity given to that person for corrective action. So I don't think it's necessarily about whatever the minor infraction is, I think it is about the corrective action, it is about the consistency in leadership, and then it's about that person's full record. So you might have someone, two people who were terminated for the same thing, but the other person had other things on their record. So again, they already, our leadership, our directors and chiefs already have latitude to make decisions and look at the full record and also there are processes in place for people to appeal, there are processes for, for people to contact, you know, you. You know, so I feel very comfortable that when we're talking about minor infractions and they're stipulated in the legislation, at some point, there has to be interpretation and latitude given for the whole code that already exists.
And I want to add, will, since we're making, the adjustment has been brought forth for the police department, would this? would this adhere to other departments? Or will it have to go, do a whole nother ordinance?
This is very specific to this department. With the Uniform Code, there has to be council approval with any change to it, which is why they're coming to you. It can't be that the chief of police wants things to be a certain way, and then that's what's done. That's why this is before you today. And so, how our handbook would apply, that's a whole separate handbook for the rest of the city's personnel.
Mayor, I just have one more question.
Sure.
One of my last time. Like I said, I do wholeheartedly believe in second chances. Things happen, and if someone's a good officer, they make a mistake, they're released. I want them to have that pathway to coming back. Just want to make sure we're doing it right.
And that's exactly what this would do, and no more.
Now, for example, like, what this ordinance is going to do? Is this going to repeal, for example, provisions saying that if someone resigns to avoid suspension or discharge, or they resigned during a disciplinary hearing without that final judgment being rendered? Basically, we're saying they could come back. So let's just say, I'm a police officer. I'm in the middle of a hearing for some type of infraction I've engaged in, but I resigned to avoid, you know, a final verdict coming down.
That's a good question.
And then the chief, you know, or whoever hires me back, is that investigation going to continue? Or is it, you know, no longer under examination? Because I feel like that's something that, you know, could be exploited. Someone could just resign to avoid due process, basically.
And what I would say to that is that can already happen without this. When someone resigns to avoid accountability, oftentimes, that person is going to go to a different jurisdiction anyway. But let's say somebody says, well, shucks, I'm going to come back. Now that, you know, there's new leadership, or now that I think that, you know, I can do something because the law has passed, but the file and the record is still there. And this is, again, this is not automatic. There's a whole vetting process that takes place. And so, I, there is no way that I believe that any chief would see someone's file. And when they left, they were embroiled in an investigation, and they come back even on part-time, and that just goes by the wayside. I don't believe that.
Mayor, I-
And one more thing. And again, that could happen without this. Someone who resigns amid controversy could leave and come back and apply again anyway, without this. Yes, sir?
Yes, ma'am, I trust the police, you know, have enough discretion that they can do the right thing in this hiring thing. I just have one question about an acronym. What is I A D?
I think Internal Affairs Division.
I think that's right.
Is that correct? Okay, that's all I need.
May I speak?
Yes, yes, please.
Thank you, thank you. Let me say this.
Uh-oh, you got some underlines and highlights. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I do. But I'm saying to the officers that want to come back, we forgive you. And forgive us for, just, we're just trying to help the city of Pine Bluff. And I think it's a good thing to let them come back if they don't have a whole lot of fractions on them and all. I mean, we got to rebuild Pine Bluff, rebuild, restore, renew this city. And whatever it takes, there was a lot of good officers out there. Firemen, fire related, firemen, firewomen, and police officers. I know a lot of them, and they left, and they realized they left a good thing, and then they wanted to come back. And I think we need to start rebuilding now. If we don't, we're going to have a hard time getting them back in the future because somebody going to offer them more and more and more. A lot of them, really, they love Pine Bluff. A lot of citizens love Pine Bluff. And some cities in the state are trying to make us look bad. But we are a great city.
Yes, we are.
You know, and we let them come back. Forgive them.
Well, and it won't just be about forgiveness, Councilwoman Mays. I'll add to that. I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying. But I'll point out that this, there will be a process in place. So this will not just be, we want to forgive somebody, and so we let them come back. There will be a vetting process and a formal process so that if someone comes back, that, you know, it won't be haphazard. Okay? Any further discussion? I forgot where we were. What are we doing?
Suspend, move and suspend rules and place this ordinance on its second reading.
It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded that we will suspend the rules for the second reading. Madam Clerk, call the roll. Oh, we don't have to do that.
Do you have to read it?
An ordinance to modify applicant disqualifications for the Pine Bluff Police Department.
No, we have to vote, and then she reads it.
Yeah. We vote, and then she votes it. Because we're suspending the rules for her to read it.
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Hocken?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier? Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton? Councilmember Fayels?
An ordinance to modify applicant-
No.
I'm sorry. No.
Go ahead.
An ordinance to modify applicant disqualifications for the Pine Bluff Police Department.
Move and suspend rules and place this ordinance on its third and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to place this item on the calendar for a third and final reading.
Do, I, it's just more of a feedback question. Because I know my, I'm thinking about my, what do we call it? Neighborhood watch meeting people. If it was, if this could have been discussed more in there just to get public feedback on what that looks like? I don't know. I just, I want people to come and have, I believe in second chances, Lord knows I do. I just want to make sure that we're doing it in a way that we're not rushing it per se, and people are, they understand what's going on when they see people back on the force. You know what I'm saying? Like, or if they, if they, you know, somebody's come back that they know have been terminated. Go ahead.
Mayor, if it's not going to cause a big disruption, I'm one of the sponsors on this. We could give it another meeting and just read it at the next meeting. You know, just to, you know, I would like for everybody to be comfortable with it. Chief, do you have a big issue with that if we wait to the next meeting?
Okay, let's do that. So that way, we won't have a, you know, because I think both councilmembers on the end, they both support it, but I think they just want a little bit more time to process.
And maybe in the meantime, if Chief might be prepared at the next meeting to share what other departments look like and gives, offer some examples of what kind of minor infractions that we might be talking about? Because I did get the benefit of that conversation with her, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I just, I did my best to answer your question, though.
Well, no, I think it's fine. I just want to make sure that because when people start seeing people that are, you know, coming back, and we want to set a standard of excellence, right? So we want to make sure that people understand, like, what we're doing, why we're doing what we're doing, and making sure that we're doing it correctly.
I agree.
Yeah.
And I just would say to that, though, the people that they're going to see coming back are folks who fell asleep and that kind of thing. They are not going to see people coming back who got terminated for excessive use of force, for lying, for really doing the kinds of things that would be, that would be cause for decertification.
Right.
You know, those are the kinds of things that people look up and say, hey, wait a minute. But some of the, some of your more, any, any, any time, under normal circumstances, minor offenses lead to people going and working someplace else.
I agree.
You know what I'm saying? And leaving quietly, people don't even know. Yeah. But it's those major offenses that people are aware of where there's not only a decision for termination, but do we take it to the next step? And when you try to go to another department, they're like, uh-uh.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, okay.
And with that, I withdraw my second, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Again, item number three, a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to add a position of information technology technician within the technology department and approve the job description and compensation for the position.
Whereas the police and fire emergency services departments are in need of technology assistance and desire that a new position for a technician be created within the information technology department with the primary assignment of assisting these departments. And whereas, the job description and compensation for both, for the position has been vetted and approved by the human resources department. And whereas, information and technology are increasingly vital to the efficient and effective delivery of services by the uniform departments, and having a person dedicated to support them is desirable. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, there is created an additional information technology technician position within the information technology department whose primary assignment will be assisting the police and fire emergency departments. The job description and compensation for the position is detailed in the attachment which is incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, the 2025 municipal budget is amended by transferring the sum budgeted for one unfilled patrolman position within the police department and allocating to this sum to fund the new position. Section 3, the finance department will modify the 2025 budget to reflect this change.
Move for adoption, second.
It's been moved and seconded that this resolution be adopted, resolution number three be adopted. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Lockett?
This one here. We have the money to do it, y'all. But here we run into the problem that since we passed the ordinance, they're saying all budget adjustments we've done is in the form of a resolution. I think we need a little more specificity. One of the issues that I have is that a patrolman job only pays 41, and this particular job pays 57. So I'm just wondering, will there be enough within that position to fund this with one patrolman?
I think that there's a range for patrolling. And so, I don't know that it's limited to just 41. Those positions have ranges that might extend beyond this, beyond 41.
Yeah, I just would like to make an amendment to say that this will be rewritten to specify to the exact amount of the money to be transferred. So when you look at this resolution, it would serve as creating the position and doing the budget adjustment.
So moved.
Wait, I need a second.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm making a motion that we, that we-
I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion that we revise this to state the specific amount of money being transferred from the police department to this, to this position.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the Section 2 with exact specificity. Any discussion? All those who approve that amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
Second.
It's been, a motion has been made to approve the resolution as amended and seconded. Any discussion? With no further discussion, all those who approve the motion as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's passed.
Again, item number four, a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to add a position of office manager within the fire and emergency service department and approve the job description and composition for the position.
Whereas the fire and emergency services department is in need of an office manager position, which previously had been budgeted in the department but not included in the 2025 municipal budget. And whereas, the job description and compensation for the position has been vetted and approved by the human resources department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the 2025 municipal budget is amended with reference to that part thereof pertaining to the fire and emergency services department to add an office manager position. The job description and compensation for the position is detailed in the attachment which is incorporated herein by reference. The salary for the position will be funded from the 2024 carryover funds for the balance of 2025. The finance department will modify the 2025 budget to reflect this change.
Move for adoption, second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number four be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to be added as a sponsor for this resolution as well as number three.
Any further discussion?
Well, ma'am, I'd like to make the same motion that we revise this to add the, an amendment to amend this to add the specific amount coming from the carryover fund. We don't have carryover anymore. We amended the budget to allocate all the money toward specific allocations. I'd like to, that allocation we had for temporary salaries, I'd like to amend this to describe the exact amount. This $39,000 that would be transferred to fund this position until December of 25.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir, that's a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number four would be amended to specifically reflect the amount being transferred from temporary salaries versus carryover. Any discussion? With no further discussion, all those in agreement to vote for this, the aforementioned amendment to resolution number four, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution as amended. Any discussion? With no further discussion, all those indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Again, item number five, a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to add a position of laborer within the Pine Bluff Street Department and approve the job description and composition for the position.
Whereas the Pine Bluff Police Department is in need of a laborer position, and whereas the attached job description and compensation for the position has been vetted and approved by the human resources department. And whereas, the line items for two open truck driver positions within the street department should be removed from the 2025 municipal budget to provide the funding for said position. And whereas, it is in the best interest of the City of Pine Bluff for a laborer position to be created within the Pine Bluff Street Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the 2025 municipal budget is amended with reference to that part thereof pertaining to the Pine Bluff Street Department to add a laborer position. The job description and compensation for the position is detailed in the attachment which is incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, the line item for the two open truck driver positions within the Pine Bluff Street Department shall be removed from the 2025 municipal budget for the purpose of funding the laborer position. Section 3, the finance department will modify the 2025 budget to reflect said changes.
Move for adoption, second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number five be adopted. Any discussion?
Discussion here, ma'am. So in the resolution, we have two open truck driver positions, but we're creating one laborer position. And I guess my question would be, are we creating two laborer positions?
No, we meant that, yeah, that needs to be two.
Two, okay. That was my major question there. I've talked about this for a long time with other department, with other directors. So I'm glad that Director Dockett has decided to go ahead and make this change within his department because it is harder and harder to find CDL drivers to do the work and, you know, with the pay that we have at the city when they can go out on the road and make so much more. So I think those laborer positions will be much needed, and I think we'll be able to get a lot more done in the city. I'd like to be added as a sponsor on this one as well.
So were you making an amendment to-
I would like to make the amendment for-
To reflect two laborer positions?
Yes, I would like a motion to make a laborer position, two laborer positions, anywhere in the language that just has a laborer. We would like to change it to two laborer positions.
Madam Mayor, I think we need to add to that amendment that we specify the exact amount because what I'm feeling is that CDL truck driver positions pay more than the labor positions.
Oh, they do.
I'd like to, you know, add to Brother Brown's amendment that we specify in the language of the resolution the exact amount of the two positions and how much is going to the truck, I mean, going to the labor positions. And we may have a little excess that he may have to make an adjustment and put somewhere else also. Because I'm thinking if a CDL is 45 and the laborer is 31, you got two positions, but you're going to have a little, little overage.
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that stay in salaries?
It would stay in salaries.
Okay, okay, okay. We're just, we just make it specific to the two positions, I guess. I got you. That makes sense.
So are-
That makes sense.
So are, is, are you?
Okay, I'm cool, I'm okay with that going in the motion.
Okay.
That's fine.
Add me as a sponsor, if you.
So who, oh wait, okay, hold on.
Okay, so.
So who's all add, being added as sponsors here?
Brown Jr.
Brown Jr., and Lockett and Holcomb.
Okay.
So it's been amended and seconded, I'm sorry, the amendment has been been made and seconded to add three sponsors, Holcomb, Brown and Lockett, as well as specify the exact amount that the 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 two positions will be in the language and also to amend anywhere where it refers to just one laborer position, change that to two.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays.
Yeah, I just wanna, I'll support this. I just want to make sure we've been getting our streets fixed properly and not not.
Well, this is just about the positions right now.
I understand, but they gotta go to work, though.
Well, but so in order to go to work, we gotta fulfill this position.
I I understand that.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, we we gotta strengthen our street department.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, Councilmember.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
We we have to strengthen, matter of fact, this plus the whole city. We're looking at this here right now.
Yes, sir.
And I'm gonna do whatever I can to make this work. I just don't want to see him coming in here setting around.
Well, we're not, well, we're not doing that and we're not having that conversation right now.
Well, it's a good conversation.
So, no, 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 no. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, with no further discussion. Did we?
Vote on the amendment.
We're just voting on the amendment, right?
Vote on the amendment.
Okay. With no further discussion, all those voting for the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the amendment passes.
Motion to pass the resolution as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the mo- that the resolution be passed as amended. Although, any discussion? With no further dis- with no discussion, all those indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number six, a resolution adjusting the annual salary paid the mayor's chief of staff.
Whereas the annual salary for the mayor's chief of staff was not implemented in the most recent ci- city salary survey due to the fact that the job description for the position was not adopted until after the annual salary was set. Since that time, it has been determined that the entry level salary for the mayor's chief of staff within the salary survey would have been fifty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars. And whereas, subsequent to the salary survey, the city has adopted a job description for the position and implemented two cost of living increases of two percent per annum for the years twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, increasing the salary to fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars. And whereas, accounting for the two cost of living increases and the importance of the duties of the position, it is recommended that the annual salary for the position be increased to fifty-eight, seven seventy-four. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the annual salary for the chief of staff to the mayor is hereby increased to, from fifty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars to fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars retroactively to January one, twenty-twenty-four. The salary is to be funded from twenty-twenty-four carryover funds for the balance of twenty-twenty-five. The twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five municipal budget is amended accordingly.
Before we do that, I just have a quick question of the finance director. Isn't the current salary fifty-two something?
Look on the fifth.
Yeah, on the job, on the job description it has.
Oh, it has it, yeah.
Fifty-two oh twenty-one.
So shouldn't this say where it's increased from? Shouldn't that be corrected to say the fifty-two? Fifty-two thousand, twenty-one dollars. Fifty-two thousand instead of fifty-six, four ninety-two. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would entertain an a motion for an amendment accordingly.
Yeah, yeah, we we gotta.
Move for adoption, second.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Okay, so we don't have to amend it before you?
No, you just, you jumped discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
You kind of jumped.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I did. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Um, it's been moved and seconded that this resolution number six be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to amend this resolution to reflect that current salary that you just mentioned, fifty-two thousand, zero twenty-one, in line number twelve as the.
Twenty-one.
Hmm?
Line number twenty-one.
Line twenty-one?
No, twelve.
No, twelve.
No, it's twenty-one.
Twenty-one and twelve.
Twenty-one and twelve.
Yeah, twenty-one and twelve.
Okay.
Fifty-two.
Well, no, you don't have to change twelve because the salary in the survey would have been fifty-six.
That's right.
Oh, I see.
The only one that's really changing would be twenty-one.
Okay, twenty-one.
Where it's increasing from the current salary to the new salary.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, ma'am, in addition, I'd like to add the exact amount that's coming from temporary salaries to be added to it so it'll be a budget adjustment so we won't have to come back. So it it'll, it'll reflect to where the money's coming from and the exact amount.
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir, so moved.
Second.
Real quick, let me recognize that and then we'll go to discussion. It's been moved and seconded to amend resolution number six by correcting the the current amount of the salary on line twenty-one from fifty-six thousand, four ninety-two to fifty-two thousand, twenty-one dollars and then to also reflect the exact amount being transferred from salaries in the current budget. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I would like to say, Chief of Staff really does a good job keeping everything moving with the City Council and all. Does a great job. I have no problem supporting this and I pray that everybody else supported. Done.
Thank you, Councilmember Mays. Any further discussion? Councilmember Denton?
Go ahead. Well, I was just gonna say, in, just for the record, so everybody knows that it's an adjustment that was, well, it was more so that we are bringing that, the salary up to where it should be. So it's not like we're just changing the salary, but we're actually bringing it to the standard of where it should be due to the salary survey. Sometimes I don't think that might not be clear for people. I was trying to put it in layman terms, like we're not just changing people's salary, we're actually bringing it to where it should be due to the survey that we use for all salaries in the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Brunson. Councilmember Denton?
Okay.
Okay.
Should took care of that. Another question, are we going to increase others' salaries where they should, where they should be?
We did that, so it, there were, I think, two or three salaries that for whatever reason, for different reasons, were not included in the survey. And the HR director said that she kind of went over all of this and double and triple checked with the fine-to-con to make sure that there were no other salaries that had not been included in the salary survey.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further qu- discussion? With no further discussion? We will vote on the amendment. We will vote, again, we will vote on the amendment. All those voting for the passage of this amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the amendment passes.
A motion to, a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made to approve the resolution number six as amended. All of tho- any discussion? All of those who wish to approve resolution number six as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number seven, a resolution providing, adjusting the salaries paid certain positions within the city clerk's office, amending the 2025 municipal budget and related purposes.
Whereas, it is desired to adjust the salaries paid certain positions within the city clerk's office to bring them in line with market value and the average salary paid by other cities for similar positions. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, the annual salaries paid, the positions listed below within the city clerk's office are hereby increased from the 2024 annual salary set forth to the specified new salary for 2025. The position of administrative clerk from thirty-one thousand, two hundred twelve dollars, six cents to thirty-four thousand, twen- two hundred eight dollars and forty-one cent. Administrative de- assistant deputy city clerk, thirty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents to thirty-seven thousand, eight, two hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-four cent. Chief deputy city clerk, forty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-eight, fifty-seven dollars, forty-eight cent to forty-nine thousand, six, six hundred, two dollars and nineteen cent. Sum total of increases for all positions is ten thousand, six hundred, one dollars and ten cent. Section 2, the increases shall be funded from the 2025 municipal budget allocations for an unfulfilled position in the administrative clerk of administrative city clerk. Section 3, the 2025 municipal budget is amended to reflect these changes.
Move for adoption, second.
It's been, it has been moved and seconded that this resolution number seven be adopted. Any discussion?
Can I say something? Because I think sometimes a lot of people don't know how salaries work in the city and I think there might be, it might be need for some clarification on that. So let me first just start off by, me personally, I feel that the office, not just the city clerk's office, but all offices should get a raise or a salary increase because people are doing a lot of work and underpaid, you know, and that's just me being honest about it, that's Letitia Brunson's opinion about that. And I do know that we do have a certain policy and procedure of what, the way we do things when it comes to salaries. You just can't increase someone's salary because you want to increase, it does have to go in front of the council. But I know you probably might be thinking also, well, we just added positions and they are coming from other positions within the budget, right? So I know Mrs., and I hate to bring her up here, I know she probably like, don't call my name, Ms. Cunnaway is here, our HR director, that can probably provide clarity to people who might be listening or watching who might be like, well, you just gave salaries, you just gave positions in other departments, what does this look like in, for this area? So I just wanted to say that I, you know, that's the only issue that we're up that we have when you're in a city budget and city government is that everything has to come to a vote when it comes to the budget, it has to come. So go ahead. Go ahead, Clerk Roberts.
Madam.
Oh, go ahead.
Madam Mayor and the council, I just want to express, this is no different than the process that is in place. The budget was approved, these funds are within the budget and not coming from any other line item.
Okay.
These positions were not evaluated under their current job titles and duties and responsibilities during the time period of the 2020 survey.
Okay.
And therefore, to bring it up to the current value, which is two years underfunded, two years underfunded, to bring it up to their current market value of today, it would be what's listed here. And it identifies exactly and specifically where the dollar amounts come. I do understand that many think it's a salary increase, it's not a salary increase, it is going through the same process of which all have done and which we just recent, we just did prior to this one, presented the default that it was not properly vetted during the 2020 salary survey. And therefore, the council did approve a 2021 salary survey that offered these recommendations and the council denied that. So I'm just simply asking that, I only manage one department.
Right.
And I do understand and respect that the mayor has various departments in which she has to manage. So therefore, I'm managing, evaluating and operating with these individuals and their positions within the category of their duties and their respective duties and responsibilities.
And you're saying that they did, and this was not included in that survey?
Not in the 2020.
Okay.
Survey.
May I speak?
So, wait a minute, you said these positions were not in the 2020 survey?
No, sir. The administrative assistant position, the assistant deputy city clerk, nor the chief deputy city clerk's position was within, that's what was identified in the 2021 salary survey.
Well, now I don't know if that's one hundred percent accurate because there were positions from the clerk's office that were included in 2020 salary survey.
And that was the issue respectfully, that they were not vetted properly by the company Johansson that sent, and it was what was sent to Johansson, not by the clerk.
I understood. And I think at the time when the salary survey was done, the previous clerk was in office, that clerk at the time submitted job descriptions to HR for them to be submitted to Johansson and then those salaries regenerated from that.
I understand what you're saying, but as I spoke with the previous clerk, it was not, it was just a general pool that they just said, here are the positions and they coincide with the other departments.
Right, understood. I guess the thing is, Madam Clerk, is that those positions were accounted for in the survey, to say that they were not, that that just wouldn't be one hundred percent accurate. You know, and the reason why the previous resolution was passed the way it was is because it was not included in those positions that we're referring to now are included. So that would be basically saying that we're gonna put a 2025 standard to a sal- salary survey from 2020 and that that would not be fair across the board for other employees.
Well, I do understand your position. There's no reason for me to not present accurate and transparent information with facts and I do have the salary survey for 2020, 2021 to present, to show the facts.
I, may I, may I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, my question is, shouldn't we look at everyone's salary and did everyone get a cost of living increase?
In certain years, we, two percent. I think one, one year we did not receive a cost of living increase, but the other years was like a two percent since the salary survey. So I think last year was the exception to that going into 25, but the years before that was a two percent increase.
Okay, so where did we get the chief of staff salary from if it wasn't included?
It was, we have a software that actually, was there a software that we had?
There's a software that was the, if I'm recalling this correctly, the software that we use now to assess any new positions is based upon whatever the framework was that this, the previous salary assessments were, were used to do the previous salary assessment.
Uh, Mayor, as it relates to the chief of staff position, when the salary survey was done, there was no chief of staff.
She was asking where that, where that salary came from then.
Oh, after, okay.
Um, that's why we're saying, we're, we're using the, the, the software now.
May I speak?
Councilmember Mays.
Yes, thank you. Uh, City Clerk Roberts, you're doing a great job. Just keep doing what you're doing. The raises are coming from her department. Every time City Clerk Roberts want to do something, some of y'all come against her. She's doing the best job she can for the City of Pine Bluff. Every time the woman tried to do something, somebody come up against her. Every time the woman tried to do something, somebody come up against her. I support you 100%. Just keep doing what you're doing. Their, her department runs well. It's, it's, it's a lot of work in there and they deserve a raise. Now, 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 the rest of somebody in here around here, I don't know, because they come, just sit around all day long.
Oh, come on. Okay, I just got one.
I mean, it's my time to talk, I'm talking.
Oh, okay, go ahead then.
Yeah, really? Don't, don't do that to me. But every time, her, her office is, is probably one of the business ones in the city government. I, I see it. I call on them. Everybody else twiddling their thumb when you go to their offices.
Well, this is the thing though, Councilmember Mays, and I'm gonna keep saying this. When we talk about issues, we're gonna talk about issues, departments, facts, figures. We are no longer gonna engage in the practice of casting negative light and, and allegations that anybody who we have hired and who've come to work every day to work for this city don't work and sit up and twiddle their thumbs. We have managers, we have supervisors, we have directors, we have chiefs, and it's our job to oversee it. And I just, I don't think that's right. Now you, and you and I are often on the same page, we work well together. So this is not against you in particular, but anybody who has that kind of negativity to speak about our personnel, I'm just not gonna support it and I'm always gonna speak against that.
All right.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I think, I think we should support it and, and let's move on and make the City of Pine Bluff a great place to live and raise a family.
Okay, Councilwoman Brunson.
Okay, I just wanted, so these salaries that's on here was in the 2024 survey? Whatever the last survey was?
2021, not the 2020, but the 2021, is that what you said?
It was in the 2021.
Counsel, I mean, Madam Clerk?
The 2024 salaries are listed there.
Okay. I was just trying to make sure that when the survey was done that it wasn't not included. You're saying it was not included?
These positions, job descriptions, duties, and responsibilities were not properly vetted. It.
So you're saying they were included, but they weren't properly assessed?
No, these weren't.
They weren't properly surveyed?
They were not properly surveyed, nor were they properly, they're included. I think it was just under, they was lumped in as administrative position and not identified as their individual job titles and duties and responsibilities. The chief deputy comes with supervi-, supervisory responsibilities. And when you lump that in to the human resource of vetting position, then it did not include those proper duties and responsibilities. But I wanna say this, and I wanna ask the council. Where is it with me having one department and I'm managing the funds within that department? I'm not seeking funds from any other area. Where am I failing to properly articulate to you all the clear cut, written out, totally clean and transparent that you, you have a hindrance or, or not understanding the articulation of this legislation? Just help me to understand where I am failing.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't think you're failing. I just wanna, if it's something that is a discrepancy, if it's something that wasn't done correctly, I think maybe this should be pulled and maybe we should get to the root of what did not happen to make it happen correctly, if it's something that did not happen. That's, that's where, that's where I am is, I don't, she's, because Clerk Roberts is saying that it wasn't vetted, it wasn't done correctly, and it's up for a vote. And I would hate if it's something that we didn't do on our part or something, that we don't fix it, if it's something that needs to be done. And if it comes out and if we did it, okay, fine, but she, I don't know. I wasn't here, so I, I'm not sure what, what that looks like. So that's just my two cents on it.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I say call for a vote, don't pull it.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Fells.
So I think, you know, as council members, we have regular contact with the clerk's office. I don't wanna speak for everybody, but I think I can when I say that we all agree that they do work very hard. You know, the members assisting us with meetings and things. So I do support them getting the raise. It's not a question of whether or not I support them, it's just all about the timing per se. Because I see in the resolution that, you know, we're taking funds from this other position. It's just $10,000. Me personally, I don't have an issue with this during that, during the budget cycle. I think that, you know, the common practice of the council has been, we don't wanna start opening up salaries and raises in the middle of the year because once we set our funds and when we start trying to identify additional funds, it can get kind of, become kind of a messy process. And so unless I get some clarification that there was a discrepancy in how this was surveyed, my recommendation is that we just come back, you know, towards the end of the year and we either vote to increase these salaries or don't, that's something I would support. But at this time, I just, going with the common precedent, just don't think we should open that door.
I have one more thing.
Councilmember Brown and then Clerk Roberts.
Okay, I feel this. We have a salary survey that we put into place, this council. For the majority, I think most of us were here when we set that survey in place. Once you start deviating from the salary survey, you run into problems. If you deviate from one salary, you'll have to deviate for 100. And, and so anytime we start altering the numbers, moving away from what we passed, moving away from the salary survey, it's just gonna open up, open us up to more salary discussions in the future. I think the best course of action for this council is to stick with the salary survey that we passed and set salaries according to that and not deviate from it.
Madam Mayor. Clerk Roberts.
With respect, Councilmember Fells, I do understand your point about the timing, but where in a policy or procedure to say that there's a certain time to grant raises or award your employees based upon the current market value? And then as, because we just did that just a second ago, we just did it. And then as it relates to the salary survey, if you're going to operate from your current uses of your salary surveys, this difference not. There's no difference than what is presented and what we have just done.
Madam Mayor, I think Councilmember Brunson kind of clarified that situation because going into this meeting, I kinda had the same question as to why we were raising the chief of staff salary and then there was opposition to this one. But I did understand, you know, that previous salary was not included. That position did not exist when we did the previous survey. But these positions, they have been surveyed per se. And so, and also to your other question about, you know, the written rule in terms of the timing, it's not important it's saying that we have to review salaries within a certain time period of the year. It's just been a good, common practice in terms of good governance. It's just something, a precedent that the council has been following. And I don't see really the need to deviate from that because like Councilmember Brown said, once we start making exceptions, then, you know, other employees will start coming forward. And if we don't have the money to make all those allocations, you know, before that budget cycle, it'll be, it'll become an unfair process for our employees. So the fairest way is just look at everything all at once. That way we can prioritize it based on the amount of money that we have. And I don't see a need for us to deviate from that at this time.
This is my final comment.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Everything you all have said tonight has been discussed at the administration committee meeting, so I'm not gonna be redundant. Everyone deserves a raise, but at this present time, it's not the proper time. Your, your department working very hard, all, all departments work very hard. But as each council member has spoken on tonight, they have voiced their concerns. Councilmember Fells, Brunson, Lockhart, City Clerk Roberts, Mayor, Brown, Ms. Denton.
My final comment, Mayor, is I do not govern the other departments. So I cannot make a determinate, a determination for the other departments based upon how they are managed and operated. I can only do that for the city clerk's position. I have identified the funding source. I have, and then I present to you, you know, the sustainability of it. Therefore, year 2026, the sustainability for these of $2,000, $3,000, and a $4,000 increase will come from various revenue avenues that we have within the city. So I'm just asking you, and I'm gonna state to you once more, to recognize that I manage only one department, the funding has been identified, it was not properly vetted during the 2020 salary survey. When you lump some, when, when you lump in just administration or administrative position within a department, you're not outlining, and I appreciate, and which I'm sure Councilmember Brunson can help me with this, being an HR individual, that is not how you properly vet and evaluate positions within the department. So once again, here's my plea. It's clear, it's clean, it's cut, it's only $10,000 that within my budget. And actually, it doesn't take up the excess within my budget. This is just a little drop from what I have currently as a surplus within my budget.
And that's why I, and we, because you, you saying that it was not properly vetted. This was kinda getting me when we're saying that we have not did something correctly.
Counsel, I'm sorry, will you finish, Councilmember Brunson?
Well.
Please finish.
No, I just, that's so, when, because it was, the accusation has been made that something has not been done correctly. That's why I asked, would it be off the table to just pull it and wait until, and get confirmation? I don't know if that's the, you know, I'm not the sponsor of this, so I, you know, I don't know. But I just, I don't really know, you know, it's the accusation for me, right? So I'm like, if we didn't do something correctly, we need, that need to be cleared out.
Councilmember Lockhart.
In all honesty, in all fairness to HR and the council, these positions were not properly vetted because they didn't exist and Madam City Clerk was not an elected official at the time that these, at the time that we did the survey. Madam HR, if, if Kim, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, Madam, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because we gotta explain that there was a city clerk and there were positions and there were positions submitted, submitted for the survey.
Yes, in 2022, the city clerk had a separate survey passed by Johansson.
And we funded it?
Yes.
And these numbers fell within those, the original ones?
The numbers for her survey, I don't have them with me, but I have the survey.
Did we pass them?
Did you pass back the 2020?
2022.
2020.
The 2020 was done, but those numbers, when you came, did you come only 21?
21.
Okay, then she asked for a survey that the council paid for, separate from the 2020, which included those three positions.
Did we accept them? Did we fund them?
Yes.
So how did these new numbers fall within that survey?
I didn't make the new numbers.
So what I'm saying is, we, if we pass this tonight, we would be revising the survey. Her department would be the only one that would have a revised survey that's after a survey.
Correct.
So, so that's what I'm saying, the numbers that we see in the first column were vetted by Johansson.
I don't have that in front of me.
But I'm saying they were passed by the council.
Yes, Johansson passed a new survey.
And they were vetted as the best numbers at that particular time?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so, so that's what I'm saying, I wanna make it clear that these numbers have been put in software that came up.
They came strictly from Johansson, not put in software. He did that separately from our 2020 survey.
Okay, and I just wanna make one, one thing perfectly clear to any department head that's out there, that the time that we do raises is during the budgeting process that is between October and December. And we do that because in all fairness, in the City of Pine Bluff, unless we find a mistake that we made, which we did find with the chief of staff position, we don't correct numbers within, within salaries.
No, it's normally across the board, across the board.
I just wanna make that clear, Madam Mayor, that, you know, as, as a council member, if we start changing salaries in the mid-year for different reasons, every department head will have a request that they found an extra $5,000 in their budget that they wanna distribute across their staff.
I have a question.
Councilmember Denton.
I'm sorry, but was inspection and zoning, was there a change?
Her salary was, it was incorrect.
Yeah, a mistake was made.
Yes, and that was made on the conference.
And so she received back pay?
Yes, she did.
Inspection, oh yeah, inspection and zoning, that's right.
I think we've been on this topic for quite a while.
Just give everybody.
Yeah, I can call for the vote, please.
Okay, with no further discussion, and I don't think there were any amendments, so it's been moved and seconded that Resolution Number Seven be adopted. All those in support.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Madam Mayor, may I ask for a roll call?
I, I wasn't finished. All those indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion fails.
We don't have to do a roll call?
You don't have to, but it's a request that I ask for.
The vote was clear.
Well, let me say this. I will say that with one yes vote, the, the vote fails, so that's clear. With one yes vote, the vote fails. Okay.
Denyed or made a resolution, authorizing disposal of certain and, and, and quoted in superfluous.
Superfluous.
Superfluous equipment possessed by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Whereas the Parks and Recreation Department is in possession of a number of pieces of equipment which are antiquated, not in use, and superfluous. And whereas the department should be authorized to dispose of the equipment in the most efficient manner possible. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, that the Parks and Recs Department is authorized to dispose of the items of equipment listed in the attachment heretofore in as expedition, in an expeditious manner as possible. Section Two, the equipment may be offered to local communities in the county sold for scrap if either is not practical, junked on the best term available. The mayor and department head may execute certificates of title and/or bills of sales to facilitate the transfer of a piece of equipment. Section Three, any funds generated from the disposal of the equipment will be allocated to the Parks and Recreation Department equipment budget.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution Number Eight be approved. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. So these pieces of equipment that we have, are we gonna host an auction for these? Or how are we gonna dispose of these items?
The Parks Director is here, may I ask you, Director Holman, to come to the front and you can answer that question in terms of the specificity of the process.
Good evening, everyone. So, superfluous meaning they serve no purpose, they're unnecessary, they don't have much value at all, if any. So selling them for scrap is the best desperate option to get rid of the items because they are so old.
Okay, and so looking at this, you know.
They're inoperable as well.
Inoperable, okay. So you have the three vehicles that we see here, 99 truck, 2001 truck, 2000 truck. So those are, those don't work?
They do not work, they are inoperable. However, I mean, if you would like to make an amendment for those to possibly sell differently, but I mean, scrap is the most efficient option, I believe, in my opinion.
And then the zero turn motors, or mowers?
Yeah, they're very old. These don't have a year on them, but I assure you, I can provide that for you. They're so old, we can't even, they're inoperable.
Okay, and I guess with that, you know, in the future, if we did have something like this, maybe some photos of what they are, because we have no idea.
Absolutely, and going forward, as we move forward in Parks and Recreation, I am working to create a better tag system for our items. That way we can identify them and have the appropriate serial numbers attached to them as well as the year to just be more transparent, so.
Okay. I believe that's all I have.
I hear.
Councilmember Mays?
I saw some of the pictures, I mean, could some of them be worked on?
No, sir.
I mean, do we have mechanics here that could work on that?
We do have mechanics everywhere. However, this equipment, again, is so old and it's inoperable. It cannot be repaired.
Yeah, some of them like 20 years.
Older.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Almost.
Have you seen it? Oh, okay, okay. I haven't seen it, that's why I was asking.
I understand.
Madam Mayor, it would be good, good for not only Parks and Recs to identify inoperable vehicles, equipment, and the various departments. So we can do, as we have done in the past, is annual auction, which has generated some revenue for the city.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got distracted because I thought that there wasn't something on the agenda, and it's on there. So now what's the, what's the problem?
Oh, there's no problem. I would just suggestion, suggesting in the future that all departments, that we identify an auction day, that all departments will identify their equipment or inoperable items.
We will probably incorporate something like that. We're actually moving toward establishing a procurement position and process for this reason. So, yes, later. Any further, any further discussion?
And so when we say scrap, are we just gonna just give it away? Is that what we're doing?
No, it listed in the proposed information that we sell it for scrap, and then we could put, use the fund revenue back into Parks and Recreation.
So we would have some type of auction or sale or?
No, we just wanted to sell it as scrap. Like, we can take it somewhere that will
Accept it.
Accept scrap items, and then whatever funding we receive from that will go back into the Parks and Recreation revenue.
So, so these trucks and this equipment? Do the trucks start?
No, sir, they're inoperable.
You mean, we don't have a person on deck that could?
Mr. Mays, you just asked me if we have mechanics. We do have mechanics, they can possibly fix them, but they are very old, they're inoperable. And it wouldn't be feasible to spend a great deal of money on parts and labor to get them up and running so that we could use them every day.
So this will free up some space for you too, right?
Absolutely, it'll reduce a lot of litter and debris and the look of old, dilapidated, you know, items around our shop. And then with the vehicles that don't work, we want to be in compliance with your new, you know, ordinance that you have about the old vehicles sitting around.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I call for the vote on this particular resolution. Have we done that already?
We can. That's a, I don't know if that's a motion, but we gonna do it.
Yeah, I make a motion that.
Send a proper motion to call for the vote. Is there a second?
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that we call for the vote for approval of Resolution Number 8. All those in agreeance indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, the vote has been called, and I believe that is not a debatable motion. So we will, it's been, has it, did we hear? Yeah, it's been moved and seconded because we were in discussion. It's been, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 8. There is no discussion, so we call for the vote. And all those in agreeance to adopt Resolution Number 8 indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? It has been adopted.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, a resolution appointing Jordan Sims to the Civic Auditorium Commission.
Whereas the term of Zachary Taylor as a member of the Civic Auditorium Commission has expired, but he has continued to serve pending the appointment of a successor. And whereas the mayor has elected to appoint Jordan Sims to succeed Mr. Taylor, subject to council approval. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor's appointment of Jordan Sims to the Civic Auditorium Commission to serve a term to expire July 31, 2030, is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution Number 9 be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in agreement for the adoption of Resolution Number 9 indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? It has been adopted. And I would like to also take this opportunity, since Mr. Sims has joined us for a second time this month. If you could please stand, Mr. Sims, and be recognized by the commission. This is who we, who has agreed to serve and who we just appointed to the commission, the Civic Auditorium Commission. And we thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Can I just add one thing? Mr. Sims is great.
Councilwoman Brunson?
I just want to add, Mr. Sims is great. He's a mentor in my kids' after-school program, TOPS, with Ms. Dove, and I appreciate all he does. So I'm looking forward to you working on the commission.
I don't know, I can't remember, and it doesn't really matter to say what Mr. Sims' exact age is, but I do want to point out that we are being very deliberate about any opportunities to reach out to residents, to serve, to reach out to young leaders. And that we certainly have in Mr. Sims, so thank you so much.
Agenda item number 11, a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget as regards the general fund.
Whereas pursuant to ordinance number 6849, a change or adjustment to the municipal budget requires the action to be memorialized by ordinance or resolution depending upon which form was used to approve the budget. And whereas the 2025 municipal budget was adopted by Resolution Number 4849, and whereas it is necessary to make an adjustment to change the budget as described in the details attached to three pages. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the adjustment to the 2025 municipal budget set out in the attachment which affects the general fund is approved. The particulars thereof as detailed in the attachments are incorporated herein as fully, as if fully set forth, word for word and number for number. Section 2, that the 2025 municipal budget adopted by us is set out in the attachment. Section 3, the Finance Department will ensure that the budget is implemented as amended.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution Number 11 be adopted by the council. Any discussion? With no discussion, we will entertain a vote. All those in agreeance with Resolution Number 11 indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The resolution passes.
Agenda item number 12, a resolution appointing Keidra J. Burrell to the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas Convention Center Hotel Public Facilities Board.
Whereas Rosalind Mauser has resigned as a member of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas Convention Center and Hotel Public Facilities Board. And whereas the vacancy has existed for more than 60 days, and the board has not recommended a replacement, and therefore by law, the mayor is permitted to appoint the replacement. And whereas the mayor has elected to appoint Keidra J. Burrell to fill the vacancy, subject to council confirmation. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor's appointment of Keidra J. Burrell to the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas Convention Center and Hotel Public Facilities Board to serve a term to expire May 1, 2030, is confirmed.
Move for adoption? Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution Number 12 be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in agreement to vote for Resolution Number 12's adoption indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Resolution is adopted.
Last agenda item, agenda item number 13, a resolution appointing Rocky R. Thornburg to the Aviation Commission.
I think we already did that.
No.
We did not? Talk to them, repeat his term.
Oh, okay.
Whereas the term of Rocky R. Thornburg as a member of the Aviation Commission has expired, but he has continued to serve pending the confirmation of a successor. And whereas the mayor has elected to reappoint Mr. Thornburg to the commission, subject to council confirmation. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor's appointment of Rocky R. Thornburg to the Aviation Commission to serve a term to expire May 31, 2029, is confirmed.
Move for adoption? Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution Number 13 be adopted. Any discussion? All those in agreement for the adoption of Resolution Number 13? With no discussion, all those in agreement for Resolution Number 13's adoption indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 13 is adopted.
Move for a German?
Second.
We, yeah, we had one person, and he will come at the next meeting, so we're good.
Okay, motion been made to adjourn and seconded. Any discussion?
Maybe I have, I have one.
Okay. I do have announcements. Actually, I do have announcements before we.
I have one thing.
Yes, please.
Councilmembers, if you're not busy Wednesday, if we can, let's try to attend Lake, I mean Jazz on the Lake.
On Wednesday?
I don't know if you got the text message.
Yeah, I got it, Jazz on the Lake, 6 o'clock.
And just quickly, I know everybody's making their way out. I have five quick announcements. The first one is to, for those to join us, residents to join us at Jazz in the Park at Saracen Landing on Wednesday, May 21, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., featuring the amazing Rodney Block. Then don't miss the grand finale on Wednesday, May 28, with a special performance by Synergy. For more information, contact Pine Bluff Parks and Recreation at 870-536-0920. Number two, get ready to make a splash. The Splash Pad opens on Saturday, May 24, from noon to 8:00 p.m. Come cool off and kick off the summer fun. Number three, Pine Bluff Parks and Recreation will be hosting the Bloom Tennis Classic happening June 6 through the 8. Don't miss this exciting event, whether you're playing or cheering from the sidelines. To register or learn more, call Pine Bluff Parks and Recreation at 870-536-0920. Number four, join us June 6, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Pine Bluff Convention Center for Go Orange Day, a community event to raise awareness about gun violence. The City of Pine Bluff and GVI, Group Violence Intervention, encourages everyone to wear orange and stand with us to promote a safer, gun-free Pine Bluff. The Art Times 3 Campus would like to invite you for a free reception on May 28, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the art space on Main Street to welcome Celeste Alexander, the new executive director for the Art Times 3 Campus. You can RSVP by calling 870-536-3375. And we will go ahead and call the vote to adjourn. All those ready to adjourn? We are, there was already a motion, motion and second. Oh, there's one more on the back, though. In observance of Memorial Day, City Hall will be closed on Friday, May 23, and Monday, May 26. We honor and remember the brave men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom. And so with no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.